Alright, we're gonna stand and uh we'll get started, so say the prayers with us.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're gonna get started with our Spotlight School, it's gonna be the high school again. There you go.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having us. Dan Walbourn, principal of Greenfield Central High School. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight about the many extracurricular happenings at Greenfield Central High School. Um, I've said from the beginning, it was actually just a year ago at this meeting that I was approved as the principal, but I've said from the beginning that uh one of the things that was most appealing about GC to me was the fact that we offer so many opportunities in different areas of student life. Um, just in the past fourteen days, and I'm sure I'm gonna forget something on this list, but in the past fourteen days, our school has participated in an art show. We've sent students to compete in the VEX Robotics Championships. We've had choir performances, ISMO performances, parade of bands. Uh, you may have packed into the Performing Arts Center for that. Uh, we've had hosted the underclass awards, senior awards. Obviously, we mixed in a few days of school, it's AP testing season and uh competing in different areas of spring sports as well. But um to speak with you tonight, uh we have some students from um one of our really outstanding and I I consider it a unique opportunity with our extracurricular activities. So we have students from our SLA, which is our Student Leadership Academy. And uh I will go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Hadley Hill and Charlotte Seidel to speak with you tonight. And then our three other student volunteers later with your activity, uh get ready for that. Uh Parker Cupp, Braylon Mumon, and Jacob Wop. So, thanks. Here you go, ladies.
It'd be a big trouble if they call Mr. Carter.
That'd be a full screen.
Yep.
Oh.
Notice they did call Mr. Carter.
They did not.
So we were talking about the Student Leadership Academy. Um, what we do, we develop leadership skills for students to take and apply them to their own groups and teams. And SLA is in its twenty-fifth year.
Uh, outside of SLA, there's another group inside of it called Athletic Leadership Council. And it's a group of selected athletes and they learn how to better be better leaders in their sports and academics and they learn how to better represent GC. There's twenty adult volunteer team leaders, which is mostly teachers, and a hundred and eleven student members, so forty-one in ALC and seventy in SLA. And we're split into different groups.
Um, what we learned about this year is self-awareness, courage, accountability, empathy, passion, and commitment.
These lessons are taught through admin, teachers, community members, and SLA alumni. And each meeting has a different um topic before we learn.
And then there is Jacob, one of our students that is also here today, and Mr. Carey. And we have the activity that the boys have.
Getting nervous. I'm gonna move over here.
Hello, my name's Jacob Welch, this is the spider web. And the whole point of the game is to get to the other side without touching any of the spider webs, so to say. And Mumon can tell you the rules about it.
Yeah, my name's Braylon Mumon, and the biggest thing is you can't use any of the holes twice. So everyone else get to the other side, but you can only use one of the holes one time. And you can also not touch any of the strings, otherwise Parker's gonna get you.
I'll be watching. If you touch it, you gotta restart.
Okay, so who wants to uh try? We're gonna get two teams, two teams, five people on each team. Oh, Mr. Carey, you're up first. Come on, Mr. Carey.
Oh.
Together also, if you need to.
And Mr. Rollins next.
We're together with him.
You might wanna take your jacket off.
For this.
Maybe your shoes, too.
Here, why don't we start with you?
Are you guys doing this?
We aren't doing it. No, of course, you're you're doing it. You gotta make it through. Without touching it.
You go first.
Where's the big and tall? Yeah, but then I've gotta jump.
Do you need some scissors?
You think this one right here, Mr. Carter?
Doesn't the team like get to hold the strings back for you?
Oh, no.
And if I hit it straight?
Then you gotta redo it.
Now we could be here all night.
Mr. Brown, you want to give it a shot too? So we don't have to take a little crack at it, Mr. Carey.
It's not as easy as it looks. Oh wow!
So I can use the same one, right?
Can't use the one that's our top one. And you can lift someone up through it.
Yeah, see, I told you, you guys are not using your teamwork.
Make it, son, right?
You made it through.
Cause I was stretching the string.
Show us how somebody gets through the small ones. Show us how somebody got through some of the smaller ones.
You just you just pick someone up.
Mr. Carter, will you join us?
Here we go, yeah. Come on. Two on each side.
Which one are we going for?
Get him right to the middle.
This one, this one.
Gotta help me out.
You gotta pick up my feet.
Are you picking up Jack up? Oh, I know, I know.
Yes, so, no.
Start back flat. Lay on the ground.
Yes.
How are you going for this?
What am I doing, Mr. Carter?
On each side. Pick up. Yes.
Can Mumon pick me up?
All right, pick me up.
Just don't drop it.
You gotta be still.
How could this go wrong?
Let's grab one. Why didn't nobody volunteer?
Jason, I want you to do that.
That's what I was gonna do.
Matter of trust. All good. Thank you, guys.
So as you can see, the SLA uh provides a lot of opportunities for development, obviously the leadership skills, but also skills in the important areas of teamwork, uh some self-confidence. So I appreciate everyone's willingness to participate tonight. Um, this was my first Spotlight School experience, I hope I'm invited back. Thank you all, have a good evening.
I will leave right along, there was no one asking to speak tonight, so we'll go on to routine matters. Negative motion to approve the regular school board meeting April fourteenth, the executive session April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five.
I believe that we approve the minutes from the regular session and the executive session on April fourteenth.
I'll second.
Call it, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, saying? Those are claims, Mr. Day.
Uh, yes, including your packet, our regular claims, payroll claims, and the first claim on the floor project at the high school. I'm happy to answer any questions you have about the claims. Um, I ask the board to approve the claims as presented.
Can I get a motion to approve the claim dockets as presented?
Make a motion to approve the claims docket as presented.
Can I second? All a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, saying? On to older members, business financial matters. Mr. Day.
Yes. Uh, including your report, in this report is the final April receipts and expenditures for the Operation Education Fund. Um, now that we have reached the end of legislative session, um and we are working through the ramifications of Senate Enrolled Act One, which is property tax reform, and House Enrolled Act uh ten oh oh one, which is a biennial budget. This is my twenty-second year working in and around school finance. This is the largest change to Indiana education finance that I've seen in that time. Uh, the changes that are coming at us are extremely consequential. Um, they're very unsettling because even as we, last week I was in Fort Wayne for the IASBO annual conference. One of the, one of the big events there is on Wednesday afternoon, we have people from the DLGF, the Indiana Department of Education Finance Group, and the State Board of Accounts come and speak to the entire group in one large setting. So there's no, you know, game of telephone, we all hear the same story at the same time. They all said that they don't know what to tell us at this time. Their legal teams are still working through the ramifications of this, this legislation. At the end of the day, the basic math on property taxes have changed. We are no longer working in the, in the system that we've worked with, you know, really for the last seventy-five plus years. Even with the changes that happened in two thousand, even with the changes that happened with tax caps in two thousand and eight, the basic math of property taxes have haven't changed. They have now, in twenty twenty-five, that math has changed. If we do nothing, if we don't increase our values, our property tax rate will go up, out of our control. Nothing that we do will change that property tax rate, stop that property tax rate from going up because they've changed how assessed values are going to be calculated. They're gonna change how our net assessed value, what we base our taxes on, is going to change. Uh, we met with some professionals from Stiefel and Ice Miller, people that you have, you know, had here in our board meetings multiple times over the last ten years. Uh, they're working on this too. They're predicting thirty-five to forty-five cents increase in the tax rate, even if we do nothing. It's just a very complex set of changes, it's really going to take multiple years to figure out where this all goes because that's the way they've set it up. They've set it up to s- to scale in over over uh five years until twenty thirty-one. We won't know the full impact of what's going on until then. And that's just the property tax side of it. Um, as we talk about our biennial budget, you know, as you know, every two years the state passes a budget and they s- they figure out what we're gonna be paid for basic tuition support, what we're gonna receive for complexity index, and special ed counts, and and honors count, you know, all the things that go into our basic state aid, the dollars that we use every day to pay for what we spend out of our education fund. Those projections do show an increase. If you just pull the projections down from what they published, it shows an increase. But they baked in our curricular resource appropriations. And that's, that's about one point two million dollars over two years. That essentially means that the increase that they are showing for us is not, is nonexistent. They, they flatlined the budget essentially for two years for us. Now, some of that is prediction, prediction of our enrollment going down. So if we can not go down what they predict, we'll end up a little bit off if we go down.
Prediction has us dropping about thirty students in each in the next two years, roughly.
Yeah, yeah, roughly thirty students, thirty-five, I think, over the next two years. Another change that happened at the end of twenty twenty-four, um that really kind, really gets highlighted now that they have baked curriculum resources into our, our base funding. All that, all those dollars, both revenue expenditures, are going to come through the education fund. And you see that in that, in the report. When we purchased the uh new ELA curriculum, that shows up now, I've, I've added a line item inside general, or education funds, sorry, I mean, talking back to ten years ago. I added a line item education fund for both the expenditure side of our curriculum resources and the revenue side of our curriculum resources. You will note that uh we spent about a million dollars on ELA. That's a, that's something that we used to be able to spread out over a few years. We ran it through a separate fund that was designed to absorb those hits every so often and then go and then get replenished through textbook rental. They got rid of textbook rental, they, they changed where we account for this. Um, and just to give you an idea, you know, we're, we're gonna get approximately, where did I put that? Bring in about half of our, our, of the, of the calendar year amount, which is six sixty, in this fiscal year, three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. As you can see, there's a big gap between the million dollars we spent on ELA and the three hundred and thirty thousand dollars we'll get this year and the six hundred thousand dollars we'll get in a fiscal year. So, you know, we're gonna have to work to manage that. Like I said, when Fund nine hundred was available, which was the old textbook rental fund or curricular resource fund, we were able to build that up over time. And then when we had these big purchases, that cash balance would go down and then we'd build it back up and then we'd buy math and then, you know, it'd go down and build, you know, so we had a separate fund to deal with that and it made the accounting a lot easier. Now we're gonna have to count forward in the education fund. Lots of updates to the projections. Um, they're updated as, as best I can tell today with what we know. Obviously, as ADM comes more into focus, we'll be able to, to, to change that revenue number. As some of our cost reduction, I added cost reduction line item in the education fund to reflect some of the, the pieces that we're working on right now. Trying to try, trying to capture that and, and see how that's going to affect our ability to continue to operate that. I have talked about including an increase in our education operations fund transfer. We've been looking for efficiencies for two or three years. We are very, I'm not gonna say bare bones, but we, we have become extremely efficient in our operations. There's just lots of things that we need to do at times, uh whether it's an emergency boiler repair or it's, you know, seal coating parking lots, and those type of things, you know, just the, just the everyday, this water fountain has decided to run all the time, what's going on, you know, we, we have people who take care of, of things like that. But, but we, we try to minimize that as much as possible. We're gonna continue to look for those efficiencies, we're gonna have to look at our workforce, we're gonna have to look at our purchase services and utilities. Utilities is really tough. We have done a lot of energy-saving projects over the last five years. We've done a lot of LED lights, we've made them so that they're dimmable, dimmable and controllable. Uh, we've put a lot of lights on timers and sensors, so, you know, if somebody were to leave a room and forget to turn off the lights, if nothing, if nobody moves in there for five or ten minutes, the lights will go off. Our utility costs continue to increase over the last six years. Really what we've done is we've helped mitigate some of the inflation in utility rates. You know, I think we're all seeing that in our, in our home rooms, you know, utility rates continue to go up. We're gonna have to look at ways to, to manage that. Overall, with, with what we're looking at, you know, we're gonna have to look at some, you know, reducing some square footage, or it's something we should study. We should look at decommissioning any unused spaces we have. You know, taking the lights, you know, down to just a safety light. Changing the setbacks on our HVAC, you know, some of those items. Moving forward, we're gonna continue to look at fiscal year state aid projections. Well, as I said, that'll come into a little bit more focus as our ADM solidifies. We're gonna continue to look at borrowing money uh for some of our capital projects. You know, we've not been able to do much out of operations fund, um but we have done some. That's probably going to come to an end. Anytime we have to do a large project, we're, we're gonna have to look at ways to fund that outside of operations fund. I've had the distinct pleasure today of passing along some really terrible news. Some really gloomy financial news. But I tell you, I, I, speaking on behalf of, of, you know, the, the team we work with in central office, and our principals, and our teachers, and our custodians, and everybody who, who makes this operation run, we will continue to do our b- our best to provide the best educational co-curricular, extracurricular program possible. We are gonna maintain commitment to supporting our faculty and staff through a positive work environment, competitive salary, competitive salary and benefits. The board has been outstanding over the last, you know, five years on raising our salary and benefits for all of our workers and, and we're now the highest on average teacher pay in the county, which we weren't five years ago. We, we were way behind everybody else. The good news, we have planned for a day like this. We have planned for a day where, where it's gonna get stormy. We have been frugal, we have been efficient, we have set aside money for a rainy day, and that day has arrived. We're positioned to manage this, uh we're gonna need some cash balance in education fund and we may have to dip into our rainy day fund, but the goal at the end of the day is not to compromise on our management. I'm happy to answer any questions, I'm happy to leave the room and change. But, you know, we're, I think it's important that we talk about the effects of what has happened, really, I mean, really in the last month. That legislation moved very quickly, you know, we knew something was going to happen. I'm not sure anybody was able to predict that this was going to happen. Um, but it's important that we report to you the challenges ahead and, and, you know, know that we're gonna keep working on.
I'll just interject, uh obviously he has shared some, some heavy news. But I do want to, to put a feather in, in Mr. Day's cap, we have prepared for this. That's why we have a cash balance in our education fund. We have made a very low transfer from our education fund to our operations fund compared to most schools. The state allows you to transfer up to fifteen percent, we've been closer to six percent in the past. That's gonna need to increase for us this year. The efficiencies we're looking for would be everything from uh those who are staff members paid through the education fund as well as those through, through the operations fund. We'll continue to look for some of those efficiencies as we prepare for next fall.
Appreciate it.
I said it well, but I mean, to sum it up, everything I'm hearing with my role with the state is do more with less. And I think we've positioned ourselves well to do more with less, but probably gonna be some pain in the interim and working through that. But I think we've done a good job, not only us, but the team here to prepare for it, the, the team here to, you know, find everything what Nate has asked them before, what Dr. Rollins is asking, so I think we'll weather it together, but it is gonna be more with less, with the emphasis on the less. Now it's just finding out where does that come from.
Appreciate it. Let's move right along. Figure out, uh, two instruction and program report.
You're gonna see a number of things here. Start with the, the summer programming and just a lot of the similar things that we've brought before you in the past in terms of our GC READS program for our second and third grade students that need a little additional support for the IREDS assessment. More on the exploration side, we'll continue to have camp invention as an opportunity for our students. K one oh one for our students who will be coming to us for the kindergarten experience. We'll continue that partnership with the Purdue Extension and we'll have that at J.B. Stevens. And then lastly, there on that list with the, the high school programming, we continue to have the summer school opportunities and, and our students will have those opportunities through CISC for a broad variety of classes, but we will have our students onsite for that summer PE program in particular. Uh, we do run a number of our students through that, it's a great way for them to be introduced to the high school campus as well as learning some of the staff that we have. So not a lot of surprises there on the summer programming, but I know this group realizes uh our high school facility in particular does not rest through the summer. And J.B. Stevens will be very busy for us this summer as well. Some of those opportunities for our staff, certainly many opportunities listed there for you to, to look at as well. Everything from uh TBRI to our, our writing program as well as our, our mathematic program that, that we'll have. So it'll be a very busy for, busy summer for us here at Greenfield Central. As for the, the IREDS three update, uh we gave you a little sneak preview of that last month that we were actually very pleased with the performance that we had had, really across the board, higher than it had been in previous years. I'm reminding you that we've continued to work with our students that did not pass of, of an opportunity to take that assessment here, uh actually next week. And then a third opportunity over the summer if they don't pass that here in May. Our staff's working very hard to, to meet the needs of the, the students that we have. And then that last piece listed there, just some updates that Mr. Marine and the rest of the team have put together for you with that fourth grade transition, we've met multiple times with our fourth grade teachers as well as listening from our classified staff with that change, moving fourth graders to, or keeping them. And then elementary school wanted to have an update for you there and provide an opportunity if you had any questions you had for us about that transition, so I'll pause right there.
Any questions?
Things seem to be moving, moving on very well on that front. The next piece we have listed for you would be the, the NASA Voice presentation. So I do believe we have some representatives from the high school this evening. Mr. Reagan?
Thank you for the opportunity to come in and speak uh tonight. We've got our NASA and our, you guys can come up too. We've got our Voice and our NASA representatives. Uh, it's part of our grant fundings uh to get the students in front of you guys, have them kind of make their presentation, share what, what great things they do in the high school and, and throughout the, the community. So I'm gonna turn that over to them.
I am Cole Lauterback, I'm a sophomore and I'm a core leader with Voice.
I'm Sarah Paul, I'm a junior and I'm a core leader at Voice.
I'm Kylie Henderson and I'm a senior.
So what Voice is about, what is GC Voice? Voice is Indiana statewide youth empowerment brand dedicated to educating, engaging, and empowering teens to stand and promote a tobacco-free lifestyle. Here in Greenfield, we are a student organization- Here in Greenfield, we are a student organization at both the high school and middle school that shares the important message of eliminating smoking vaping in teens in Hancock County.
Our schools group participated this year in the homecoming parade, Halloween trunk-or-treat event, Red Ribbon Week, Earth Day Celebration, Voice State House Day, Great American Smokeout, Take Down Tobacco, World No Tobacco Day, and present presentations to students at our middle schools and intermediate schools. We have a strong presence on TikTok and Instagram, and one of our middle school students we have also just highlighted in the Daily Reporter.
We currently have fifteen Voice members over at the high school as of right now, and then twenty-two active members at the junior high.
All right. Hello, my name is Katie. I'm the senior representative at NASA at Greenfield Central. I have been a part of NASA all four years.
I'm Kendall Barrett. I'm a junior at Greenfield Central, and I've been a part of NASA for three years. I'm planning to do it next year.
I'm Sierra Watts. I'm a sophomore at Greenfield, and I continue and plan on doing it for the rest of my high school career. So NASA is Neighborhood Against Substance Abuse. We are a part of a youth council who meets every month. We bring awareness for underage drug and alcohol abuse. Mr. Brooke is our faculty advisor. He works with us for the youth council, along with our leader, Tim. For our club, you are inducted in the program as a freshman and continue throughout your high school career.
All right, and some of the activities that we have done this year is we have gone to every single elementary school and given presentations to our third grade classes with something called Generation RX, which is what we do through NASA. So we have people come in and like teach us all about this website, and we use our presentations. Another thing we have done is we have filmed commercials for NASA. If you've been to the movie theater recently, you've probably seen one of them. And something else that we do this year was bring drunk alcohol to basketball games, and the kids had a blast with them. I think I saw more of them out in the hallway than actually at the basketball game. It was a lot of fun.
And then some stuff we did second semester. So we wrote some articles that were featured in the reporter. We also went to our sixth grade classes and gave some presentations alongside Voice, and next year we will have a youth summit where we get some of the kids from the junior high and teach them about NASA. And then at the end of the year, we always do a community survey just to locate where alcohol may be placed in stores and give more information on that. And that is pretty much it. Thank you for your time, and thanks for letting us get this deep. Thank you.
One last item in your instructional report, and that would simply be the twenty twenty-five WIDE results. Those are our students' language English language learners, multiple language learners. And you see that that population has grown very consistently over the last couple of years. Just the numbers of of students by school, by level, and obviously it's our our goal to move them toward level five. And we're doing that. We're we're moving students along very well. So just an update for you. I just wanna make sure you're you're aware of that. Mrs. Sinsini's done a great job of of working with our our two E.L. coordinators to provide for the needs or to meet the needs that students have, working with teachers, their homeroom teachers, and teachers throughout the day in the junior and senior high to meet those needs. So just kind of a for your information piece, and we're happy to entertain any questions you might have related to that.
Any questions or comments?
Um, how many languages are there represented that you're working with?
Mrs. Sinsini?
Let's see, on the spot, I would say.
Approximately.
I would say close to thirty.
Say more than people realize.
Yeah, we do hear from our our peers at Mount Vernon. It's over forty languages that they have there. So I would say we're probably in that neighborhood.
Thank you.
All right, well, we'll go ahead and continue with construction. Project update.
Much smaller construction update for you this month, but the the largest one in there related to the bids that we received last week for the project west of the high school, the tennis courts, the parking lot, and the the storage building. That information has been placed in your packet there, a summary of the the bids that we received. There were four that actually gave us or submitted a bid. The recommendation that we've put before you would be to accept the bid from McDougall Pierce Construction Incorporated. Mr. Day, anything you want to add to that?
Nope. They seem to be a good contractor with lots of experience around the central Indiana area. Decided to get started.
Do we do we have a start date? Did I miss that inherent, or do we not?
It would be shortly after approvals, if you would be so inclined.
In the in the original bid package that went out, we we talked about that they could start as as soon as they're approved.
Well, then can I get our recommendation for the bid for the tennis courts, parking lot, and storage building submitted by McDougall and Pierce?
I move that we accept the bid from McDougall and Pierce for the construction of tennis court, parking lots, and storage building.
Okay, a second.
All second.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say aye.
Thank you. We'll get started on that one pretty quickly. Also in that report, just an update for you on the the high school gymnasium flooring. All the wood is down, the striping is down. We actually do have something mid-court, so they've progressed on this since I put this picture in here. The point being, we have a big program coming up here in a couple of weeks, May thirty-first. We fully anticipate being able to utilize that space.
Move on to new business, business information.
Uh, yes, I have four items. Our normal grants and donations. The corporation received a donation, a complete set of the comprehensive written work of James Wickham Riley from Dr. Ron Torick. The value of this donation is two hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Weston Elementary received a donation of five hundred dollars from re-greening Greenfield and Purdue Extension for their plant a tree STEM project. I ask that the board approve the grants and donations as presented. The amount of these opportunities is seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars.
Can I get you a motion to approve the grants as presented for seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars?
So who?
Second.
Second.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
The next item on the agenda is the a a collection policy update for our food service program. We have been very fortunate that we've had a number of of community groups and and members of our community step up to our Feed the Future program. That has changed the need for us to use collections. Our current policy states that we collect every month, and she is asking to move to every quarter. And then there's some verbiage in there that currently we say district-wide K twelve, and that does not obviously pick up our our pre-K and daycare facility, and so she's just asking us to revise it to district-wide only. She has provided some information about collections and and, you know, how much we're sending off and how much we're collecting. But really with the with the donations to Feed the Future, we've been avoiding that and trying to help some people get back on track a little bit more quickly than sending them off to collections. Since it's a policy change, it'd be a first reading, and we'll bring it back to you next month. Happy to ask, answer any questions you have, or perhaps any changes you would like back to misstep. The next item is our paid lunch equity, or PLE, in school meal prices. You will note in the recommendation from Amanda Stout that we do not have the final PLE, but it follows the same math every year. And so we've used last year's PLE tool, which is included here, and it predicts that we have to raise prices by at least the federal minimum of ten cents. And so in order to get that out there and publicize it into handbooks and instead of waiting for the PLE, because we're not getting a lot of great information on when that's going to come out, she's asking that we go ahead and do the minimum increase for next year of ten cents. And then she's going to revisit the adult prices as we get closer to the beginning of the year. Happy to answer any questions about that. Otherwise, I ask that they that you approve the lunch prices as presented. And I guess that would be two dollars for breakfast in all tiers, three and a quarter for creasable tier one and tier two, three thirty-five for tier three and four.
Any questions or comments? If not, can I get a motion to approve the school meal prices as presented?
I move that we approve the school meal prices as presented. Second.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. My last item, again, revolving around school nutrition, is the summer nutrition program. We're getting that time of year where we have opportunities within our community and within our schools to provide lunches to kids who are, you know, you know, on summer vacation. We have added a site this year at Greenfield Central Junior High, and it's gonna be a, they're allowing us to do a grab and grow pro grab and go program. So if you come in for lunch, we'll provide you with both a lunch and a breakfast for the next morning. And you don't have to eat it in our facility, and you can grab and go for your for your group. We will continue to participate with the Boys and Girls Club at their site for their summer program. We will have our normal high school site, which will have breakfast and lunch. Great opportunity for our summer school kids and our children's theater kids, and and then when we get into the second part of the summer, you know, all the athletes who are back training and and band program and stuff like that. Again, the junior high site, we will continue to do the concession stand at the Kathy Dowling Aquatic Center and provide me weekday meals there. It's a very popular site most years. And then we have two closed sites, the Kids Camp at Greenfield Parks Department and Trinity Parks Alpha Omega. Those are, you know, vibrant summer programs within our community, and we're gonna be able to help them out with some meals. We're excited for their to participate with that. So information only. I would like to point out that there was some reports last week that people thought the summer fun meal program is being cut, and it was not this program. It's a program called Sunbucks, which provides some supplemental assistance to kids who qualify for SNAP and TANAP. But our program, the the summer nutrition program providing meals is is fully funded.
Move on to student handbook, second reading.
And it is just that you saw the same information last month. We had a representative from each of the tier talk about the changes or they highlighted the changes, and they were fairly minimal this year. We have representatives from each group. If there are some questions that came up over the last month, if you have none, I would recommend approval of the handbooks as presented.
If we have no questions or comments, can I get a motion to approve the handbook as presented?
Make a motion to approve these handbooks as presented?
Second.
Second.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say aye.
So next we have that Title One resolution. This is something we have to do on an annual basis, is to have board approval on that. We've highlighted what the program is. It really hasn't changed much for us. We went from a targeted to a school-wide program where we can assist any of the students in the schools that we're serving. You see that it's a little bit under half a million dollars per year. This being a federal grant, there have been a lot of questions as to whether that will continue. Everything we've heard from the the State Department of Education would lead us to believe that will continue for us. It may be funneled a little bit differently as the Federal Department of Education, obviously, continues to shrink. But we do use that to provide a lot of supports for our students specifically in the area of reading and a little bit of math max, and you can see that we we pay a large portion of the salary for about eight of our staff members through that. It is my recommendation that we continue that.
If no questions, comments, can I get a recommendation to approve Greenfield Central's continued participation in the federal one, our Title One program? And authorize Mr. Joe Rich to serve as the program coordinator?
I move that we approve the continued participation in the federal Title One program and authorize Mr. Rich to serve as the coordinator.
That's it?
Second.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say aye. To out-of-state overnight field trips?
Yes, we continue to have a few of these as we move into the summer months. We have a letter from FFA advisor and exercise teacher close to Overman Sorrell. Men's and women's cross-country coaches would like to take the teams to Versailles. Versailles, we said, how do we, we don't, it's not Versailles here. That's only for, it's Versailles, State Park, uh, in July. And then our football program, Travis Nolte would like to take the team to Manchester University for Team Camp. These teams understand expectations for overnight and or out-of-state field trips. It'd be my recommendation to approve them.
Can you motion to approve these overnight out-of-state field trips as presented?
I move that we approve the overnight out-of-state field trips.
Second.
Second.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say aye. Did, Mr. Beaver, did you go to Washington DC this past?
I did not. Mr. Cleveland went.
Mr. Cleveland, how was that? I'd just like to know.
I will say in my ten years of doing this trip, both here and my previous school, it's probably the best one we had. Kids did great. Weather held out. We were looking, when we left, it rained on possibly Thursday and Friday, and Friday morning it was absolutely dumping as the buses got to the National Mall, but once we opened the doors, it stopped. So just a great trip all over.
Okay, yeah. Glad you had your time.
Thank you. Thanks for all the pictures.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now let's go to contract recommendations and resignations leaves and returns.
Quite a list for you, and I'd like to introduce a few of the staff members who are here this evening, but we have a certified recommendation from Miles Ware, physical education teacher, and then certified resignations Hannah Bailey, Christine Braunhammer, Rebecca Darling, Thomas Davis, Mark Evans, Hale Kyle, Anna Sykes. Move on to that next page, Morgan West. And then ECA recommendations for David Drysback, Chris Gaylord, Riley McClure, Wes Richter, and Miles Ware. ECA resignations, Maggie Walters. Administrative recommendation, Megan Dawson. Summer school recommendations, Emma Baker, Emily Batley, Samantha Bowen, Zach Crowder, Shannon Dick, Julie Dickey. Next page, Kara Downer, Micah Garrity, Tracy Gue, William Henderson, Sarah Howlers, Katie Larson, Kara Martinez, Elizabeth Martinez, Luke Meredith, Noah Muller, Mackenzie Musson, Leslie Oden, Lindsay Ortwine, Christine Salie, and then the last page, Rico Santiago, Krista Stino, Jamie Thompson, Jessica Torres, Richard Toomey, Leah Underwood, Morgan West, Sean Widmer, Russell Wiley, and Chris Quinn. Be my recommendation that the board approve the personnel report as presented, allow us to hire as needed for the duration of this school year, if there is such a need in the next two weeks in summer school, and obviously for next year as well, and we would bring those names to you at the next regular scheduled board meeting.
Okay, get a motion to approve personnel report as presented.
I move that we approve the personnel report as presented.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say aye. On to.
Can I make a few introductions here? Mr. Cleveland, you have someone to your right. I'd like you to introduce.
I'd like to introduce Megan Dawson. She's gonna be our new dean and athletic director at Greenfield Central, replacing Mark Evans. She's been with us for seven years. First five years here at the junior high as a former math teacher, and then the last two years she's been at the high school as well, and also head coach of our JV girls' basketball team, so we're looking looking forward to having her with us.
Welcome aboard.
Mr. Walvo, I believe you have some staff members?
Yes, actually, Mr. Manning's gonna handle it. Yeah, we're really excited tonight. We've got two of our head coaches with us. Riley McClure is gonna take over our wrestling program. He is a Paramaridian graduate, state champ. Went on to wrestle collegiately at Purdue, Old Dominion, and Marion, I believe. Then he started his coaching career as an assistant at Ron Colly, and then we stole him away from Warren Central, so we're excited to have Riley with us. Miles Ware, very, very excited to have him with us. We are, he's a Mount Vernon grad, went on to play at U. Endy. He is one of the class that had the the unfortunate ending with COVID, so his collegiate career ended with COVID. But he went on to be an assistant at Fisher's High School, obviously state champion a couple of years ago, state runner-up this year. So we're excited to have him leading our men's basketball program.
Do you have any other staff to introduce tonight? We're good to go.
All right, good deal. Go ahead and take on with your out-of-state, or I'm sorry.
Yeah, just a first reading for you of the winter out-of-unit coaching recommendations. That's the first reading. We'll bring that back to you next month as well. Certainly happy to entertain any questions that you have this evening.
Any questions, comments? All right, thank you. All right. We don't have any other discussions, and we're going to important dates, academic graduation, May twentieth, Memorial Day, May twenty-sixth. On to student day. I just shut off my computer.
On to student day, it would be the twenty-ninth year.
There you go. Sorry about that. On to student day, Thursday, May twenty-ninth, Teacher Work Day, February, May thirtieth. Commencement Saturday, May thirty-first, at Greenfield Central High School. Summer school starts June second through the twenty-seventh. Regular score meeting Monday, June ninth, here at this location. If I don't have anything else, can I get a motion adjourned? This meeting.
I move adjourned.
Yeah, second.
Second.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everyone, for coming. Thanks everyone for coming.